All right. Thank you so much. It is 9:00 AM. Today is November 23rd, 2021. It is our regular board meeting for the County of Lake Board of Supervisors, and we are going to begin this meeting with a moment of silence, which I believe Supervisor Pyska has one.
Yeah, we're kind of in between the time from when he passed away to when his services, but Bob Prather passed away, and he's going to be having his memorial or celebration of life on December 4th. And, or wait, no, it's not December 4th. I think it's this Saturday. He, the Prather family is one of the oldest families in the Cobb area, and really, he taught his family and future generations forest management, and you know, how to log sustainably, and are forced to earn really great shape because of his leadership. And he also taught his children, the Prather brothers, how to fight fires, and they were really instrumental in saving a lot of the Cobb area during the valley fire. So it's a legacy that is really impacted our community, and he will be missed tremendously.
Supervisor Simon, would you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. And on item number four, extra items, I see we have one that was submitted by county council. And are there any others from the board or staff to be added for today's agenda? Seeing none, let's go ahead and county council, if you would please give us the reasons to add this extra item, please?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair. This is an item that came up yesterday, late in the afternoon. So it came up after the posting of the agenda, and I do need to have a discussion and receive instruction from your board prior to the posting of the next agenda.
Okay. Thank you very much. And looking to see if there's a motion from the board or comments or questions.
I'll move to add the extra item to the agenda for November 23rd.
I'll second, but I think we need to open for public comment.
Open it up for the public on just adding the item, or we'll be discussing the item at a later time. Thank you for the reminder. And seeing no hands in the Zoom room and no hands in the board chambers, we have a motion from Supervisor Crandall and a second by Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabate?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. The consent agenda item, are there any items that board members wish to pull? I apologize. I did want to pull one or two items. I need to...
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
It was my recommendation that you pull 5.3 because there is a discrepancy in the dollar amount in the agenda packet. And so just for clarification purposes, the dollar amount in the agenda packet reads differently than in the title of the item.
Okay, and that is the item that I have on my notes here that I needed to pull. So I appreciate you jumping in for that. And so any other items from the board? Let's open it up for the public. Any items from the public that wish to pull an item from the consent agenda for further discussion? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and come back to the board for action on all items remaining.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the consent agenda 5.1 through 5.2 and 5.4 through 5.21.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott, second by Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabate?
Aye.
Let's go ahead and take up item 5.3 right now. Goodness gracious, there it is. Item 5.3 is approve amendment number one to the agreement between the County of Lake and Hilltop Recovery Services for Substance Use Disorder Intensive Outpatient Program and outpatient drug-free service for fiscal year 2020-21 in the amount of $182,082.76. And Director Metcalf, if you can introduce the item, and then I'll go ahead and just speak on the changes that I'm looking to make.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board. This was presented to your board a week or so ago, and there's just a very minor mathematical error to the dollar amount. The dollar amount in the memo does not agree with the dollar amount in the contract, and it's off by what, seven or eight cents or something? And so we're just wanting, hopefully, to be able to approve this today with that minor edit and that the dollar amount can just be edited, could just be approved, because it's a very minor error, and I apologize for that error. But that's pretty much the explanation for the reason for pulling it, unless I missed something.
If you look at the attachment called Corrected Agreement, there was a change to the number in the approved agreement, but the written out amount did not change to match the $182,082.76. It still says 67 cents instead. Just wanted to make sure that that was resolved. If there's any further questions from the board? Other than that, I think that working with Hilltop Recovery Services is an absolute need for our community, so appreciate this being brought to the board. Any comment from the public on this item? All right. Thank you very much. Let's bring it back for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve amendment number one to the agreement between the County of Lake and Hilltop Recovery Services for Substance Use Disorder Intensive Outpatient Program and outpatient drug-free service for FY 2020 and 2021 in the amount of $182,082.76.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Crandall, second by Supervisor Simon. Roll call, please. Johanna?
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Aye.
Supervisor Crandall?
Aye.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabate?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And moving on, we are going to go to public input. This is our 9:05 AM item. This is for anything that is not on our agenda. If it is on our agenda, please be patient and wait till that item comes up. Public input will be open for every item. So again, if you have a public input for anything not on our agenda today, please raise your hand, and let's go ahead and start with Carlos Bono. Oops, I apologize for that. Let's start over.
Good morning, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
It has now been close to two years since we were asked to stay home for two weeks to flatten the curve. After destroying small businesses, locking down the state, making people wear unhealthy face masks, the original flatten the curve has turned into a take an experimental gene therapy treatment or lose your job. These experimental vaccines, which are not superb vaccines, according to Dr. Charles Evans and according to the CDC's Veres website, are directly responsible for 894,143 adverse events, including 18,853 deaths, 94,537 hospitalizations, 99,470 instances of urgent care, 139,952 doctor visits, 8,082 cases of anaphylaxis, 11,229 cases of Bell's palsy, 9,332 heart attacks, 2,996 miscarriages, 13,237 cases of myocarditis, pericarditis, 4,387 cases of thrombocytopenia, 33,660 severe allergic reactions, 21,089 life-threatening events, 30,010 cases where the patients were permanently disabled, and 10,455 cases of shingles. With respect to federal and state funds, how much money has the county received to promote these poisonous injections? And how much money does each hospital and doctor receive for each COVID case and death? And how much money has Dr. Matt Evans and members of the board received from pharmaceutical companies pushing these poisonous injections? All people, including public servants that promote these jabs, especially for children, will be held accountable for crimes against humanity since they have pushed this agenda on the public in violation of the U.S. Constitution and the 1947 Nuremberg Code, which states, "The voluntary consent of the human subject is absolutely essential." This means that the person involved should have legal capacity to give consent, should be so situated as to be able to exercise free power of choice without the intervention of any element of force, fraud, deceit, duress, overreaching, or other ulterior form of constraint or coercion, and should have sufficient knowledge and comprehension of the elements of the subject matter involved as to enable him to make an understanding and enlightened decision. Furthermore, the code states, "The experiment should be so conducted as to avoid all unnecessary physical and mental suffering and injury." And that the degree of risk to be taken should never exceed that determined by the humanitarian importance of the problem to be solved by the experiment. Clearly, none of the Nuremberg protocols have been observed, and no informed consent has been obtained from the so-called approval of the experimental injection. Also, the so-called approval of this injection was a ruse because the Comanati-approved treatment has not been made available. The mandating of the experimental jab in the workplace has been stopped on the federal level because the mandate is unconstitutional. If you want to make a difference, go to StandUpLakeCounty.org and read and sign the petition against these unconstitutional mandates. If we don't fight for our rights, they will be lost forever in time. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Next, oops. Phone 1113. I believe I sent you unmute.
Yes, thank you very much. And I would also like to address, this is Dr. Will Tuttle. I'd like to address the COVID response and the mandates that are happening and really emphasize this basic idea that we have ivermectin. And there are many countries in the world that are using ivermectin, Nigeria, Sierra Leone, Bolivia, Paraguay, Peru, Guatemala, Honduras, Macedonia, many of the states in India as well, such as Uttar Pradesh, many other countries in Africa. And they all have something in common, which is that they're not having any trouble with COVID. They're using ivermectin. It's been, ivermectin is on the WHO list of essential medicines. The developer of the drug won the Nobel Prize in Medicine. The British ivermectin recommendation development task force has been recommending this now for many years, excuse me, for many months worldwide. They said, quote, "Ivermectin is already in use around the world. It can reach the poorest people long before expensive COVID treatments will ever get to them." It has an ever-increasing evidence base that shows that it works. So you know, the whole idea is that if you have something that works, you can never use a vaccine. That's against all protocols. And so they have to pretend that this doesn't work. And there's a tremendous amount of corruption going on among the media to say that it's horse medicine or something like that. And I really think the board should be on top of this and looking into this because this is, these, as we just heard, these vaccines are devastating. And Anthony Fauci has been saying recently that ivermectin, excuse me, that the vaccines that are being offered do not stop people from spreading the disease. They do not stop people from getting the disease. They not stop people from dying from the disease. And so now we're supposed to have boosters, right? Which are also known to be extremely toxic. So again, this is obviously a tremendous amount of corruption. And the CARES Act, which was enacted at the beginning of this whole pandemic, has been used in many ways to give a lot of money to hospitals. They get reimbursed every time they do a PCR test, which is required. They get additional bonus payments for every COVID diagnosis. They get additional bonus payments for COVID-19 admissions to the hospital. They get a 20% boost bonus payment for the entire hospital bill if they use remdesivir instead of anything else like ivermectin. They get another big bonus payment when the patients are ventilated on ventilators, which are deadly. They get more money from CARES when the COVID is listed as a death. Coroners also get a special bonus for death. So there's a lot of money being funneled in to feed a corrupt system to promote the idea that people are dying from and have cases of COVID. Okay, but I'll just close and say that Italy just reduced the number of COVID cases by 97% when they actually didn't count it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for the comment. And I see no further hands up and nobody in the boardroom, so we...
Mr. Chair, I did receive a letter from a constituent to ask me to read it, so I'm going to go ahead and read it. Mr. Mike Raffinelli, this is the letter. This is Mike Raffinelli's letter. This is a letter to the tax collector Barbara Ring. I know you cannot do anything because your hands are tied by our state congress, but I do want to say, I wish Lake County would keep all the property taxes for Lake County. Let's look at mine. 2021-2 property tax tax bill is 5103, and the California government will take 1% of the assessed value. In my case, it is $3,835. Leaving the county treasury only 1,268, 25%. And Sacramento takes 75% of money and uses it in other places around the state. The board of supervisors for years has been complaining two times a month, "Let's look for a grant or get ahold of McGuire and Curry and ask what they can do." How about just do not pay the 75% to the state? I and many others want to buy land here in the wonderful county, but we want to keep the money here locally. This is a taxation without representation. If you kept the 5103, just think of what the board of supervisors can do. I am thinking about only sending 1,268 because I do not want to give you the 3835 to go to Sacramento. Then you might be able to end all these tax increases and bond measures. We won't have to struggle to keep our firehouses equipped and manned like you are trying to do in Kelseyville. You can hire more people and do more things in the county. All of the 25 counties in the north should honor what the people voted for in 1992, which was to leave the state. We are in rural county and want to stay that way. I would trust our board of supervisors with my money more than I do Sacramento. Mike Raffinelli. So I just wanted to read that. It'll be in the record still.
Thank you very much. Okay.
And once again, that was a letter from one of my constituents.
Thank you very much. So let's go ahead and start our 6.2 AM item, 9:06 AM. Sorry, our 6.2 item at 9:06 AM. Consideration of a letter of opposition to A21-09-008, which would be expected to result in an effective 4.9% rate increase for most PG&E residential customers. I wanted to just share my screen real quick, do a quick presentation for both the board and the public. Let's see if I can... Okay, there we go. So on September 16, 2021, PG&E filed for the request, which could equate up to 4.9% if approved for electricity rates. In comparison, and I'll get to why I'm putting this here, gas rates increase will be 0.2%, at least that's what's being requested. Huge difference between the increase on electricity versus gas. A non-bundled category, which is for those customers not receiving electricity service, their rate is being increased by 2.3%. So because they get one out of the two, they're only seeing a 2.3%. However, there's no category for non-bundled for those not receiving gas. That's one of the points that I will be making in my letter. There's a letter written for the board, which is more of a general letter, and then my letter that kind of has a different tone, as you've probably read and seen. It makes no sense to me that we only get partial service from PG&E. We're either forced to use electricity for heating and cooking and other reasons to use electricity instead of gas, or we're paying for propane. And propane is not cheap either in comparison to what the natural gas rates are if we had the natural gas pipeline from PG&E. The rate increase is to ensure that they follow General Order 95, Section 3, which is all about line maintenance, tree clearance, and line construction. Those are things that we now know and have known in the past couple of years, if not few years, that PG&E has not been following the General Order 95, Section 3 rules, and CPUC has not been enforcing these rules as well, which is why now, before, we never saw this, but now we're always seeing constant tree management and maintenance coming from PG&E and their trucks as they're trying to provide a little bit better maintenance so that trees and branches do not disturb their lines. Another reason for the rate increase is PSPS planning and execution, which in my opinion is entirely due to the lack of ability to maintain and upgrade their infrastructure in the first place. Wildfire mitigation is also some of their reasons for this. Temporary generation to support customers. And again, temporary generation, as we saw in our presentation from PG&E. The majority of this is controlled by PG&E as far as when power goes down, the amount of times that it goes down due to actual issues with their infrastructure. It's either a PSPS where they put it down themselves because of the potential danger, or seems like the majority of it was due to repairs or work on their infrastructure, which would take us down. And then, of course, the usual excuse of the year, COVID-19 is another purpose and reason for the rate increase that they're requesting. And so I wanted to at least make sure and highlight to both the board and the public some of my issues. And in an AP article from 2020, in there it said that by 2024, PG&E expects to post a full-year profit of nearly $2.4 billion. And my question is, why are we doing a rate increase on a company that has failed to meet expectations and continues to go against what CPUC mission statement is, which is to have a safe and reliable energy source? Which is, in my opinion, both are failing us. It is not safe, as we've seen with the campfire and other fires, and it is not reliable, as we see from the number of power outages that we experience every single year. But yet, they're anticipating to make in $2.4 billion and asking for a rate increase all at the same time. In the past, because of the campfire, a judge insisted that PG&E be fined $200 million, and that was waived by the CPUC. And so for the CPUC to not hold PG&E accountable and yet for the CPUC to agree with this rate increase, one of the reasons I'm bringing this up is it is a judge who has to agree with the rate increase. And I want to make sure that they recognize that a judge was not heard and listened to by CPUC. And not only that, but we have an issue where a very good investigation brought out that the CPUC is not the independent commission that it is anticipated and created for, that there was a lot of intermingling between the governor's office and the commission, which ended up with the waiving of the $200 million. And I just think that the rate increase is a slap in the face to our constituents, and it doesn't solve our problems that we're also having with PG&E and their infrastructure. And I wanted to make sure and highlight those things because I think that we need to be very direct in the conversation of why this is not going to be working for us. So in front of you is a letter to approve, which is a general letter, again, that is meant for the board to approve. I put my letter in there as an example of my personal statements that I will be submitting to the PG&E rate increase hearing because I think it's important that we all submit our own letters as well. We all have our unique experiences. We all have our own districts that we serve and need to speak up for. And I just wanted to make sure you were aware that we can go much further than just a board letter. We can also provide our own personal ones. And so that ends my presentation. And open for discussion on the letter that was drafted. I do want to, before opening it up, really want to thank Matthew Rothstein. I did ask to work with Carol and Matthew on the letter. He drafted the letter for the board. I reviewed it, made some slight changes to it, and eventually it's what you have in front of you. But really want to thank Matthew for his work on this because this is the majority of his work and my just eyes on it and review. Supervisor Scott?
I appreciate you bringing this to the board. And I think we also need to look at the fact, I know you put up there, by 2024, the profit is going to be $2.4 billion. I think we need to look at the fact that they've been making profit for years and have not been doing the job. And that's why we've had the fires that we've had. So it's not just this first year that they're making a profit. They've been making profit all along and have not been doing their job. So I agree, this is definitely a slap in the face to our constituents. And here in Lake County, we cannot afford a 4.9% rate increase. So I definitely agree with this letter.
Supervisor Pyska?
And to follow up with that, we've been told that this is going to be the status quo for the next 10 years with not just the PSPSs, but the outages that happen when a branch hits. And so you know, you mentioned a couple hundred outages that our districts had to go through, and now we have to pay more. So I appreciate you writing this letter, and I'll submit one as well.
And just real quick, I do want to say, the people in the blue trucks who do the repairs and do the everyday work to keeping the infrastructure going, I absolutely appreciate the hard work that they do. This is definitely the way that I speak about PG&E is towards the administrative staff of PG&E who make the decisions on where the money can be spent. I just want to make sure and clarify that because I don't want our community to look down on the people in the blue trucks trying to do their best to do what they can. Anything further? Supervisor Crandall?
I'll do a letter as well, and it's just too bad we couldn't get this in before 6.6 last week with all the commotion about greedy folks.
Yes.
Yeah, obviously, I'm in support of the letter. Obviously, you know, we all go through the challenges each year. So holding the, like you said, the corporate structure of PG&E accountable to what they're doing. You know, it's stated, we have a lot of folks that live in the county that work for PG&E, and they are great folks, are out there every night. They're working on things. They're communicating with our communities as it's happening in real time. So yeah, complete support of the letter.
All right. Let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Anybody in the public have a comment? I see none in the Zoom room, and I see none in the boardroom. And let's go ahead and bring it back. And before we bring it back, do want to say it's going to be a while before the judgment of this rate increase will be finalized. In speaking with CPUC, Matthew Rothstein, and I made the decision that the earlier it's in the judge's hands, the more he's going to really read our comment versus the receiving of thousands and thousands of letters towards the latter part where they're about to make the judgment. So being ahead was definitely the better way to go, but it's going to be a while before that judgment is made.
So a while? What are we talking?
I believe it'll be spring of next year, if not a little bit further. Yeah.
Okay, so maybe we need to submit this letter now and then later on, continue to submit something so it rises to the top?
To remind them?
Yeah, that we're still here and we're angry.
Right, right. And I hope also that we can maybe put out some information. I know it was on the, I believe it was in a letter from Matthew for how the public can submit something. If we can make sure and advertise that on our social media, I really want to get our public involved. We need to drown this public hearing with letters saying, "This is not working for us." We don't, we shouldn't reward a company with more money when there's absolute failures in the system that aren't working for us at all. It doesn't seem to make sense. And so with that, that's my final comment, if there's action.
And I'll see if there's some discussion with RCRC next week about this letter, if they're doing something like that, or even just to get it out to the rest of the counties that I'm sure are suffering from this as well.
Right.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I move to approve the letter of opposition to A21-09-008, which would be expected to result in an effect of a 4.9% rate increase for most PG&E residential customers.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon, a second by Supervisor Scott. Johanna, roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall?
Yes.
Supervisor Scott?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Swatia?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Moving on to our non-timed items, 7.2, Consideration of Ordinance Amending Urgency Ordinance Number 3108, requiring all persons regardless of COVID-19 vaccine status wear face coverings in county facilities. CAO Hutchinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So bringing this urgency back to your board for reconsideration today, and I attached to your agenda packet yesterday, the COVID epidemiology report, because I thought it might be relevant to kind of talk through where we are at. This is the COVID epidemiology report dated November 20th, so it would be the week before that. So it is pretty current. And if you're able to open and look at that report, on page seven, you'll see that our most recent seven-day rate for testing positivity was continuing to trend downward. It was 3.5% was the testing positivity rate. And if you flip to the next page, which is page nine of those slides, the cases per 100,000, the seven-day average also continuing to trend down. It had dropped down to nine per 100,000. So that's a little context for what's before you today. This was actually drafted a month or more ago and, and then pulled off of your agenda because there were a couple of other factors in play, and our numbers were much higher during the late summer surge. Now that our numbers are trending back down, it's certainly time to have this conversation. And so what's before you today in this proposed amendment would change our, would basically set a trigger for the time that this is in effect and the time that your board may act to put it in suspense. And so again, thinking about those numbers that I just quoted, if you look at Section A of the draft, county facility, this masking mandate would remain in county facilities when the COVID case rate exceeds 10 per 100,000. Presently, it does not. And when the testing positivity exceeds eight point six, excuse me, eight percent, presently it is less than that. And both of those indicators have been in place for a minimum of seven days. Likewise, when case rates drop even more, drop down to 3.9% per 100,000, which is lower than we are presently, and the positivity rate drops to 4.9% or below, which we are below right now, and both of those indicators remain for a minimum of 14 days, this masking mandate would be calendered for reconsideration of your board to consider suspending it at that time. And then there's a new Section C in there to clarify, two C, I should say, to clarify that CDPH regulations shall continue to be followed whether or not this masking mandate in county facilities is in effect or in suspense. So the intention would be that the point at which it lands back on your agenda to suspend or reactivate, that you also consider all of the other factors occurring in our communities that relate to how we're doing. And that would include emergency room and ICU capacities and vaccination rates and possibly more. But so those are some of the factors that you would consider. And I think it's just important to stress again, I noticed in one of the, in a public comment that came to your board about this item, it appears that there may be some continued misunderstanding about the scope of this urgency ordinance in the first place. This urgency ordinance is solely about county facilities. There never has, well, during this latest phase of the pandemic, I should say, there's never been a county-imposed masking mandate outside of county facilities, and that continues to come up. So I think there may be some confusion, and I thought it was important to clarify.
Thank you for that. Any comments or questions from board members? So I know this was from a conversation we had had, saying, bring this back with the triggers that we had discussed. I did do some research, and part of, part of my reason is it's, it's definitely a balancing act. It's about our employees more than anything else. We want to make sure that our employees continue to work, continue to be safe. Every time we have somebody who has COVID, we will lose those employees for almost an entire two weeks. We lose productivity, meaning we're not serving the public in the same way that we are expected and anticipated to do so. And so any way that we can reduce the harm that happens from having COVID, whether that's loss of productivity or just being sick and possibly hospitalized and die, I think that that's a good reason to have the triggers. My concern is, it, it's, sometimes it looks like the triggers are an impossible, impossible goal to reach. It just seems like we just hover and we remain where we are. And so in my research, I found that, well, we all know that the state of California was starting to loosen up its tiered system as we got towards June. The numbers started changing to make it easier for people to go into orange, to go into yellow, and so on and so forth. And now it's gone. Ever since June 15th, there is no more tiered system. There is, however, a tiered system that does exist at the CDC level, and it is a much less stringent tiered system. So one is almost entirely based on pre-vaccination numbers, because the tiered system was in existence, I think, since September of 2020, I think, is when it was created, and then things started loosening up towards June 15th, where the tiered system stopped. And whether you believe it's for political reasons or because they felt it wasn't enough vaccinations, I'm sure it's probably a little bit of both. But to look at a tiered system that is obsolete, no longer exists, with a goal that, in my opinion, seems like an unattainable goal, which means we just remain where we are, I'd like to propose that we look at the CDC, and I'm going to share my screen just to show you the difference. And so you could see that there's the California tiered system, and then they also broke it down. So California small counties that have less than 70,000, it was, and so it kind of loosened it up where we can have in seven days, 29.10 cases, or an average daily case per 100,000 of 4.16. The CDC says the positivity rate is 7.99, and then you would go into, is it moderate? I think it is. Yeah, moderate, which is similar to our orange. And so it's almost, I don't know, 40%, 35% more than what the previous California tiered system offers. The total cases per 100,000 in seven days is 49.99. And what I did is I broke it down to what does that mean to us on a specific basis? So it means that with our population being at around 68,800 right now with the new census, that in seven days, if we are below 34.39 cases, which in comparison to the California small county was 20, that then we would be in the substantial, which CDC states, if you're in substantial or minimal, that you can go ahead and drop the masking mandates. And I, in my opinion, having a rule that we know will never possibly be triggered, it seems like we're not setting ourselves up to feel like there's progress. CDC is definitely a, a place that we've been receiving and obtaining information for quite a long time, and they still have an active tier system that we can look up right now, today, versus California, you kind of have to look in its archives to be able to find the numbers that right now are being implemented and what could possibly be passed today. So I'd like to have the conversation to see if that is a possibility. I want to see us be able to get out of this situation, not continue to be in a situation with numbers that were pretty much created based on a non-vaccinated past versus a current status where more than half of our population are vaccinated. We're still seeing, based on our numbers that we saw from Dr. Evans last week, that in our hospitalization rates, it's 25%, no hospitalization rates, I think it was cases, it was 25% were vaccinated versus 75% unvaccinated. And seeing that the majority of our population is vaccinated, I think that's easy to prove that there is an efficacy to the vaccine that helps. And so I'd like to see about looking at numbers that can make a difference rather than numbers that just keep us where we are. Supervisor Pisca?
So one of my concerns continues to be the indicators, and we talked about it last week, is we, because we have the rapid testing availability, I feel like we're not getting a clue, an accurate idea of our caseload now. And I know it's always been difficult with, you know, people that just didn't get tested before, but I'm just bringing that up as a concern. If we look at our indicators, we look at our case rate and our positivity rate, and we know that there's a big, there's a number out there that's not being reported because people are choosing not to report it because they don't, you know, for a lot of reasons, but one of them is that they don't want to impact the people around them. So there's that. And then with our hospitalization, we have so many people that are transferred so quickly out of our hospital and hospitals, and we don't really have an, it's difficult, it's always been difficult for us to understand how many Lake County residents are hospitalized in our county and outside of our county. So those are the two concerns that I have, and I don't know where they fit in with all of this. We do know that cases are not necessarily in Lake County, but around the country are starting to tick up because of the cold weather and the holidays. So I just have questions, and those are my questions.
And just to, do you guys mind if I stop sharing?
Okay.
Just so I can see. Okay. I, I, I think that there's always been information that we only know what we know. And I think that it's difficult to make decisions on things that we don't know, because then it could be another 100% of cases versus what we know, or it could be another 5% of cases versus what we know. And I think it's difficult to make decisions on the unknown versus what do we know? And I think if rapid test is an issue, to me, it's not. If you're doing rapid test, that means you care enough to know if you have the virus and probably are going to take the right actions if you show that you're positive versus not, or else why even test in the first place? So I think that the more people do rapid test, the better off we are, because that means those people care enough to know their status versus not doing it at all. So in, again, I'm just looking for a way to be able to say we've hit a milestone rather than continue to do something that I'm just seeing us hover and hover and hover. And just like last time before June, we just were never able to change until June 15th happened. And even when June 15th happened, we didn't see a rise right away. That rise occurred a lot later, maybe not a lot later, but it didn't happen overnight. It definitely took at least one to two months before we started seeing the cases truly increase. And for what reason or purpose, I think that's, that's for just speculation. But I do know that we have a staff member with their hand up, and I'd like to give them the opportunity to speak, but first wanted to check in and-
Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, this is our, again, I want to introduce our Director of Nursing, Eileen Nance-Cleeve.
Yes.
Good morning. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to add a little bit to the conversation to, since this is for the employees that we're looking at, and I would have to defer to human resources because I don't know the answer to this, but I'm also looking at the vaccination rate amongst county employees and, and also waning immunity. So we're at 50% right now, 58%, I'm sorry. And, and immunity is waning for those that were vaccinated in the winter and, and into the spring. And that's about, you know, half of the folks, a little more than half of the folks were vaccinated at that point. And so now they're moving into the, the window of waning immunity and, and the need to consider a booster. And so I just wanted to add those two other elements. I'm really pleased that Lake County is looking to use a tiered system, as, as you pointed out, with the CDC in the Bay Area. You may now also established common criteria for lifting mask mandates that included jurisdictions reaching moderate levels of transmission tier defined by the CDC and remaining, remaining there for at least three weeks and hospitalizations low and stable and, and per the health officer observation, and 80% of the jurisdictions' total population fully vaccinated. So I think it is looking at a tiered system to follow and help us move forward in a way that, that makes sense. I do appreciate the comment about us not knowing there's a lot of home testing going on. There may be not testing and people just, just taking care of themselves at home. I, I do have a message out to the water resources to see if we can start testing for COVID in our wastewater again, because CDPH is looking at that more so now, understanding a bit more that measures in that can help us predict and forecast what might be happening 10 days from, from then. And, and so that might, might help us better understand people that are either not testing or doing home testing and, and that we're not aware about. So I just wanted to add those points, too. But I'm, at the end of the day, I'm just really pleased that we're looking at a tiered system that can help move us forward. I know that we're all mask-fatigued and COVID-fatigued, and, and so this is a really important conversation. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Supervisor Scott?
You know, I'm willing to look at the new numbers because I think our test positivity rate because of the home testing is very inaccurate. I think we need to be looking at the trigger of our hospitals. What do our hospitals look like? Because really, that's where we're going to see the impact. It's, it's not, it's when we have our hospitals full of COVID patients, it's, everybody else is going to suffer when they need medical help and there's no beds or they're waiting. So I, I, I would agree with the new triggers, but I think we need to continue looking at our hospital, hospital bed availability. And we also need to look at making sure that we're educating the public, our, our employees too, on getting that booster shot. I think she said something about 50% of our employees need to get that booster to continue being fully vaccinated. So I think we really need to be looking at what does that mean to really be fully vaccinated? We need to be pushing those boosters to make sure that we're protecting our employees. I know for myself, I took advantage of, they had the employee flu and COVID boosters available here. We need to make sure we're continuing to do that.
Thank you for that.
The other point that she brought up was our vaccination rate is very low with staff. 50%, is that right?
With staff, it's under 50%. With the public, it's a little over 50%.
Right, okay. So, you know, these numbers from the old system are based on unvaccinated numbers and now, and we're at 50/50s or less than 50. So I'm just bringing this up. Is that something that we also want to consider with the vaccination rate of our staff?
Ms. Grant, I see you have your hand up.
Thank you, sir. I did just want to point out that Caloosa regulations are still somewhat in flux, but I would recommend that since you're going to be using triggers that will suspend masking mandates in county facilities, that you should consider hopefully a statement that employees who wish to continue wearing masking despite the suspension of the mandate may do so. That's in line with at least the last draft of Caloosa regulations that I saw, and there are considerable number of county employees who remain concerned. And the vaccination rate among county employees is at less than 50%. The other thing I would point out is that you, you make reference to CDPH regulations. I realize these aren't necessarily regulations, but if you're going to use CDC benchmarks instead of something provided by state public health, then you should make that very clear, because otherwise there could readily be conflicts, particularly as you move into flu season.
Okay. Thank you very much for your comments. Okay, thank you very much for your comments.
And so uh if I could add, you know, Anita's point, she made some points about employees. Um, certainly, employees know that this uh conversation was agendized today for those that keep track of your agenda, but um but we didn't reach out to them on any formal level. We gave some thought to polling them, just a simple poll about what is their preference. Do they prefer um masking as a form of protection, but but we didn't proceed with that because we um assume that maybe the vaccination rate kind of speaks to that. I I'm not sure. Uh, we also did not reach out to labor reps um to see if the labor unions had any position. Um, some of those efforts might be worthwhile if your board is interested in having us do that. But at the same time, um, the voice that really should prevail the strongest is the the voice of public health and 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 those kinds of guidelines that come out of the experts.
Ms. Grant.
Oh, well, and again, since the pandemic remains in effect and California public health, uh it remains a public health emergency and locally it remains one. I would urge the individual employees, again, who feel more comfortable wearing a mask, just simply be allowed to do so, regardless of a union position or anyone else's. Um, unless your board has some reason why you think masks should just be prohibited altogether. But again, Calooshia guidelines tend to speak to this in the same way I'm speaking to it this morning.
A- a- and I get I I I think you're saying just adding a statement that says that this is still possible, but I I I don't. It definitely doesn't say the opposite, that you will not uh wear a mask, but I get it, that it helps to provide the right uh comments and the right comforts for people to continue to do so uh because they're more comfortable in doing it that way.
I I think because this is new territory, Mr. Chair, uh employees feel more comfortable, even if it feels obvious to your board. I think employees feel more comfortable stating the obvious. It's one sentence.
Yeah, no, I I I I get that. Um. Let's go ahead and open it up to the public, see if we have any comments from the public on this item. Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, just on Anita's point, um, I definitely agree with that, and I personally will continue wearing my mask regardless.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
At this point, I appreciate the the conversation about the CDC, but I but I think um at this point, I'm ready to move forward with as as presented without making the change. Um, you know, I I agree with uh putting it in there when it does. If you do make a change, that uh you have the right to to wear the mask. A big master here for a while. I think.
One of the things we experienced during the bit, oh, thank you. One of the things we did experience in the pandemic, and I think just a lesson learned was uh the flu season that we didn't have, you know, wearing a mask and staying home when you need to. I mean, before pandemic, uh, you know, was you're encouraged to come to work when when you had a you when you had a flu or a cold, you know, you were here, you were toughing it out. But I think we're in a different environment, so uh completely understand everybody's individual decisions. We we've learned a lot uh since the beginning of the pandemic, and at this point, uh I'm ready to move forward uh without changing the tiers at this point, but I know that conversation is coming uh in the future, uh after the first of the year most likely. So I will wait to see what Calooshia comes out with on their final rulings and other things uh before moving forward. So that that's my thoughts. I'm ready to move forward without a change today.
All right.
I think that uh on the same page there.
No, thank you. Supervisor Scott.
Um, I think uh the CDC is a good next step, but I'm willing to stay with where we're at, uh with what we have available to us, so. But I know that uh we wanted to hear the public, so.
Okay, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Any comments in the boardroom? Any comments in the Zoom room? And bringing it back to the board.
Mr. Chair, I'll offer the uh one thing, suggestion on where to put the masking. That was a suggestion, huh?
I would.
Do we need to do that now, the adding of the one line about the?
I would say yes, just in case that the trigger does occur. Uh, and I would suggest adding it to two C at the end of the California Department of Public Health Regulations uh that employees um and the public um if uh feeling more comfortable by masking can continue to do so or something.
I I thought that I might be hearing that that your board isn't going to take up this resolution today. Is that what I'm hearing? Did I misunderstand you, Ms. uh Supervisor Simon?
I think I think that the I think that the comment was not to change it with the CDC rules versus.
Yeah, yeah, that was my.
Oh, I see. Okay, thank you for that.
What your what your board could say is just notwithstanding the suspension of the masking mandate, uh county employees may wear masks if they feel more comfortable in doing so.
Yeah, and my question would be, and that would be under two C is what you're saying.
I would put it under B. Because B is about suspension.
Okay. So I'd like to offer the resolution with the amendment.
Okay.
Did you have people comment?
Yes.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Simon, a second by Supervisor Pyska. Roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Nay.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Moving on to item seven point three, consideration of A, board appointment of delegate and alternate to the Rural County Representatives of California, RCRC Board of Directors for 2022. B, board appointment of delegate and alternate to the RCRC Golden State Finance Authority, GSFA, Board of Directors for 2022. C, board appointment of delegate and alternate to the RCRC Golden State Connect Authority, GSCA, Board of Directors for 2022. And D, board appointment of delegate and alternate to the RCRC Environmental Services Joint Powers Authority, ESJPA, Board of Directors for 2022.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, you're really good with acronyms. And so Carolyn Purdy, our uh analyst in the administrative office, will present this item.
Good morning, Board and Chairman Sabatier. I'm Carolyn Purdy, administrative analyst. This item before you today is the annual appointment to the Rural County Representatives of California Board of Directors for 2022. This action will include four separate board appointments as listed in the memo. Each board will require one delegate and one alternate. I would like to note that item C will be a new appointment for this year. On September twenty-eighth, your board adopted a resolution granting authority to execute the contract for the RCRC Golden State Connect Authority JPA. Today will be the first appointment to this board. The 2021 appointed members are listed on the memo for your reference. And the first RCRC meeting for the upcoming calendar year will be January twelfth, which will also include the GSFA and the GS CA, and the first ESJPA meeting of 2022 will be held on March tenth, 2022. Any questions before I turn it back over to you for appointment?
Does it look like there are any questions? Thank you so much for that.
You're welcome.
Anything further, C O? Okay, and as you see on the memo, uh it has uh our RCRC Board of Directors currently are delegate Supervisor Crandall, alternate Supervisor Sabatier. Uh, that would continue and follow up on the A and B, C is brand new, and then D, we have delegate Supervisor Simon, and alternate is our Public Services Director Lars Ewing. And so opening it up for changes.
I'm I'm satisfied with being on, but I was going to say with the Golden State Connect, uh would you would you want to be the delegate on that?
I I, in my opinion, I was thinking that uh we continue uh RCRC. I I appreciate being your backup. I know you've done a lot of work in going to a- all of the meetings, and I'm there uh to pitch in whenever I'm needed to go in. Um, I appreciate the conversations from RCRC, and I'm well-connected with uh RCRC, so I was thinking keeping it the same for the first three uh with you as the delegate and myself as the alternate. And uh I'm thinking keeping it the same for D unless Supervisor Simon has a uh change. And I know it says delegate Supervisor Simon, but isn't our Director of Public Services the delegate?
He attends primarily.
Okay. But he he's still the alternate uh on our list currently?
Technically, he is.
Okay. I just wanted to check in on that. So I'm okay with that if uh looking for discussion on this. Okay.
So so then to just make sure we're understanding, um, everything remains the same, and then for for um RCRC, GSFA, and ESJPA, and for GSCA, it would be Supervisor Crandall as the delegate and Supervisor Sabatier as alternate?
Correct. That's the way it was offered. And seems to be acceptable, palatable. Opening it up for public, any comments on these appointments? Nothing in the board chambers and nothing in the Zoom room? And bringing it back for action. And before we take action, a- again, I do want to thank Supervisor Crandall. These are not short meetings. Uh, these are the types of meetings that lunch is embedded within the meetings. Uh, it's been nice uh to be able to do this remotely through Zoom rather than having to continuously go to Sacramento. Uh, but I have a feeling with the um annual conference, that was a live conference, that eventually RCRC will be going back uh to live sessions and with meetings in Sacramento. I know I've been there before. It is not a short trip. Uh, and it is a very long day, and so appreciate uh the hours that you spend uh with RCRC.
Ready for action?
Ready for action.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to appoint delegates and alternates to the RCRC Board of Directors for 2022. And Supervisor delegate is Supervisor Crandall and alternate is Supervisor Sabatier.
Is it possible for us to do A, B, C, and D all in one? I didn't think so.
Second.
I wanted to try. We have a motion from Supervisor Simon, a second by Supervisor Scott. Roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move to appoint delegate and alternate for GSFA uh Board of Directors for 2022, and it is the delegate is Supervisor Crandall and the alternate is Supervisor Sabatier.
Second.
Motion by Supervisor Simon, second by Supervisor Scott. Roll call, please, Johanna.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Uh Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move, make a motion to appoint delegates and alternates to GSCA uh Board of Directors for 2022, with the delegate being Supervisor Crandall and the alternate being Supervisor Sabatier.
Uh, second.
Uh, motion by Supervisor Simon, second by Supervisor Scott. Ready voting? Roll call, please.
Okay. Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thanks.
I'll let someone else make the motion because I'm.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to uh appoint to the RCRC Environmental Services JPA Delegate Supervisor Simon and alternate Public Services Director Lars Ewing.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Crandall, second by Supervisor Scott. Roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon. Uh Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
You got a very active six board member there.
All right, moving on to item seven point four, consideration of the following advisory board appointments, Childcare Planning and Development Council. Uh, we have five um applications in front of us. Uh, they all fit within a category, so there's no uh competition for any seats. Are there any questions or comments about any of these applications? For applicants? Okay, seeing none. Supervisor.
Just one comment. I know we go through this a lot, and it's just um, you know, kind of routine of what we do. But what what I do want to say is, uh, you know, I I really appreciate all of our community members, all of our volunteers to step up. I know uh we're always um, you know, we we appreciate every, all the work that our uh our employees do and all of our stuff, but our appointees that come on these committees, I just want to say uh, you know, thank you. We it's been challenging uh through the pandemic for everyone. Uh, but you you know, we we kind of just approve these as a, you know, just something that always happens, but I just, I just want to say that today. So thank you very much to all of them that step up for our community.
Yeah, no, it takes many cogs in the wheel to make these things happen. Definitely appreciate everyone. All right, let's open it up for the public. Any comments on these appointments? Nothing in the board chambers and nothing in our Zoom room. Bringing it back for action. And since it's one board, we can do one action for all.
Mr. Chair, I'll move to appoint qualified applicants to the first, to the specified advisory board.
Childcare Planning and Development Council.
Childcare Planning and Development Council.
By name, sure?
Yeah. By name? M- m- Maria Narvaez, Cynthia Dominguez, Melissa Knoll, Teresa Shawan, and Shawnee Egger.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Crandall and a close second by Supervisor Simon. Roll call, please.
Okay, Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatier.
Aye.
Thank you.
Seven point five, consideration of amendment number one to the agreement between the County of Lake and Sierra Vista for acute pay inpatient psychiatric hospital services and professional services associated with acute inpatient psychiatric hospitalizations for fiscal years twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty twenty-one, twenty-two, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. That was a very much in the future, I almost read. And uh moving on to Director Metcalfe.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, you articulated that quite well. Um, in this item seven point five, um, as you uh mentioned, this is a proposed multi-year um agreement amendment for Sierra Vista with whom we currently contract. What has happened is already this fiscal year to date, we have utilized this facility more than our projections had indicated necessitating the need to increase this contract amount. Um, as as I believe you've heard me say before, there's just an extremely limited number of psychiatric placement facilities in our state in California, especially in our region. And we compete with all fifty-eight counties for bed space, so it it it's truly imperative to maintain this contract and of course our relationship with Sierra Vista uh to keep in good standing to continue to provide these critical services to our clients. So um I'm basically just asking for board approval of this um amendment to increase the current contract.
Thank you very much. Uh, and the increase, I believe, is around fifty-two thousand dollars. I know that hasn't been uh mentioned um at this, or yeah, fifty-one thousand, one hundred and eighteen dollars. Any questions or comments from the board? I did have a a question for you, and I it's because of a a back and forth in the email, and I appreciate your responses and the information you provided. You 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 mentioned something to me, and I'm wondering if you can um educate me, uh, maybe the board if they're not aware, and maybe they are, uh, and also the public. You said something that the services are um, I forget what the right term was that you used, but basically they can provide services without our approval that those services will be given. Um.
It's yeah, it yeah, the word, it's an entitlement that um they will hospitalize our folks uh regardless, and they will bill us uh because it is an entitlement uh to these folks. I believe that's what, I think that's what you're referencing.
Yes, no, that's exactly what I was referencing. Thank you for um um understanding where I was coming from. Uh, and it, does it have to have a prior relationship with this patient to be able to automatically put them on their census and then bill us? Or can they just take anyone uh from Lake County and provide the services, and then we end up getting billed?
Yeah, we uh often find out after the fact in these situations. And again, it is because of that that word entitlement that the these folks get placed, and then we sometimes find out after the fact.
Okay, well, I I think I need more information on that. Uh, it's it's somewhat concerning. Okay, well, I, I think I need more information on that. Uh, it's, it's somewhat concerning because we're limited in resources. Uh, it's good to have the service available and I would suspect that obviously if they put it in on their census that uh, the service is required for their patients. Um, but it's um, it makes it difficult for us if this is the case to be able to really um, understand what what budgeting looks like, what are the future looks like, and, and I'd like to better understand that. I ju, I just wanted to make sure that uh, the public was aware, uh, I wasn't aware of the entitlement. Um, I definitely knew that we had to pay our bills, but I didn't know that they could just pick up patients on their own and then send us a bill. I thought it was already in collaboration with uh, behavioral health sending those patients to them.
Well, I'd uh, I'd be more than happy to put a little uh, presentation together uh, around this. I think that would be useful for everyone.
Okay. No, okay, that would be great. And looking at the board while we're in conversation, is that a presentation that you would all like to see? Yes. So thank you very much. In the near future, uh, not giving you a certain date to make sure you have the time to put it all together. Uh, if we can have that presentation, that would be great.
Absolutely. So noted.
Thank you so much. Any further questions on this item? All right, let's open it up for the public. Any comments from the public? Seeing none in the board chambers and none in the Zoom room, bringing it back for action.
Do you want to do this? Mr. Chair, I move to approve amendment number one to the agreement between the County of Lake and Sierra Vista for acute inpatient psychiatric hospital services and professional services associated with acute inpatient psychiatric hospitalizations for fiscal year 2020 through 2021, 2021 through 2022, and 2022 through 2023, and authorize the board chair to sign the agreement.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott, a second by Supervisor Pyska. Roll call please, Johanna.
Okay Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall. Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia.
Aye. I like there was some words in that last comment. Get, it's getting there. Uh, seven point six, consideration of agreement between County of Lake, Lake County Behavioral Health Services as lead agency for the Lake County Continuum of Care and Worldwide Healing Hands for fiscal year 2021, 22. Director Metcalfe.
Uh, yes, that's me again. Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Uh, so you'll, you'll be pleased to hear that uh, we did facilitate a formal bidding process uh, for these funds and we ended up with four applicants, um, including Worldwide Helping Hands um, and Elijah House. And those two um, were awarded uh, funding from, from, from this grant. The other two applicants that were not awarded funding uh, were Hope Center and Sunrise Special Services and, and so noted, um, I will be sure in the future to include that information in the board memo, um, so that you will have that information ahead of time. Um, as you see, this um, services have already commenced since April. Um, this grant lasts through September of 2022 and um, both the Housing Community Development Department and Housing and Urban Development Departments who um, are coordinating this emergency solutions grant funding um, are very anxious to ensure that these funds are spent down uh, by September of next year because this is one of those use it or lose it uh, type of, type of grants. And so I know monies are already being spent, but um, I just wanted to let you know that um, we're, we're, they're very anxious to make sure that, that these funds are, are, are expended. So, what I'm asking for here is board approval of this funding to go to Worldwide Helping Hands and Elijah House.
Or at least this one's just for Worldwide Healing Hands?
I'm sorry, yes.
Okay. Any questions or comments from board members? So I did have a, just a quick question and I, I don't know if you have the answer to this, but in our um, motion that will be made today, if uh, it will be approved, uh, is for fiscal year 2021, 2022. Uh, do we need to combine both 2021 and 2122 since it started in April of 2021, which is still the previous fiscal year? And I don't know if Ms. Grant might have an answer to that. Um, do you need me to repeat?
Yeah, I
Okay, I'm sorry.
I'm gonna recuse myself from this.
Oh.
Yes.
Sorry that we've already had a discussion.
Alright, so I'm just gonna step out.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Mr. Chair. Yes, if you could repeat the question.
I'll wait for Supervisor Crandall to leave the board chambers. So my question is, uh, this started in April 2021, which is the previous fiscal year. In, in our motion, we will be saying uh, if we approve, we approve of the contract with Worldwide Healing Hands for fiscal year 2021, 22. Do we need to use both fiscal years within our approval uh, to ensure that we are approving of the services rendered between April 2021 through June 30th, 2021? Or is it okay to just continue as is with what's uh, in front of us?
I think that would be a very wise addition, sir.
Okay. Okay. If no further questions, let's go ahead and open it up for the public. Any comments from the public on this item? Seeing none in the board chambers and seeing none in the Zoom room, bringing it back for the board to take action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the agreement between the County of Lake, the County of Lake Behavioral Health Services as lead agency for the Lake County Continuum of Care and Worldwide Healing Hands for fiscal year 2020 through 2021 and 2021 through 2022, and authorize the board chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott and a second by Supervisor Simon. Johanna, roll call please.
Okay Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Uh Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia.
Aye.
Thank you.
And again, um, no vote from Supervisor Crandall as he recused himself. If we can go ahead and get him back into the board chambers? And I'll go ahead and wait until everybody's back before reading out the next item.
And thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and I hope uh, you all have a great uh, holiday.
Thank you very much. Enjoy yours and to your staff as well.
Thank you.
Welcome back.
Right.
Seven point seven, A, consideration to waive the formal bidding process according to purchasing requirements, section thirty eight point two A, two, as the unique nature of services precludes the competitive bidding, oh, sorry, thirty two, thirty eight point two A, two, as the unique nature of services precludes the competitive bidding requirements, and B, consideration to approve contract between County of Lake and North Coast Opportunities Incorporated for the Emergency Childcare Bridge Program for children in foster care in an amount that shall not exceed the California Department of Social Services allocation from July 1st, 2021 to June 30th, 2024, and authorize the chair to sign. And I, there you are, Crystal Marketan, Director Marketan.
Good morning. So we are um, bringing this back um, with the request to waive the formal bidding process again, based on the fact that uh, North Coast Opportunities is the state designated uh, resource um, and referral program for childcare in Lake County. And we um, have cited the um, information that gives them that designation, um, which makes them really the sole provider for this particular service. The service is for um, people, um, children who are initially coming into care and the, their care provider.
Sorry, Director Marketan, I'm gonna pause you for a second. Sam, can we increase the volume or if it's possible on your end, Director Marketan, it's, it's very difficult to hear, especially as a car was just driving by too.
I think my um, volume is maxed.
Is it possible for you to get closer to where your microphone is?
Yes, is it possible, yes, is it possible to get closer to the microphone? It's sounding muted across uh, across the broadcast.
And, and if you can't, we can continue. We'll just try to listen better. Uh, it was just difficult.
Yeah, I'm trying, trying to figure out what I can do here. Yeah, it's maxed. Um, can you hear me any better now?
Let's go ahead and do it like that.
Okay.
Please.
Um, so sorry, do you want me to start from the beginning?
No, I, I think we can continue.
Okay, so the service provided um, by this childcare resource and referral agency that is run, ran by um, excuse me, North Coast Opportunities, as I mentioned, is a designation that is made by the state. Um, and what the service that they provide um, not, not only for um, social services, but for the community is resource and referral and support of childcare programs in Lake County. Um, and for social services specifically, um, child welfare services, dependents that are new, newly placed in the system, um, uh, assistance is um, given to the resource. So the resource family that these children are placed with, if they need childcare to help accommodate that initial placement. And they do provide other support services to resource families.
Thank you very much for your presentation on this. Any questions from board members? Supervisor Scott?
I don't have a question, but I just want to point out, Lake County here, we struggle with keeping our foster families and any resource we can give them um, to help them, um, help the children um, in our community, I'm, I'm definitely for.
Thank you for your Any further comments from board members? I, I just want to uh, say what I've already emailed uh, Director Marketan uh, in public. Um, your memo provides every basis uh, for why we are waiving the bidding. I know I looked it up and it's a learning process for me to, to kind of better understand how services need to be run. I was able to uh, find the ruling uh, of, that we have to use what we, I believe it's RNR. Uh, forget what the actual designation of RNR is.
Resource and referral.
Resource and referral, thank you. Um, and so just, it was a good place for me to go visit and find out some information and better understand how the process works. And I appreciate the uh, information that you provided for that. So I'm happy to move forward with this and I'm gonna open it up for the public if there's no further comments. We're on item seven point seven. And so any public comment on item seven point seven, we'll start in the Zoom room. Seeing none in the Zoom room, boardroom, and seeing none in the boardroom, go ahead and come to the microphone. Item seven point seven is regarding the North Coast Opportunities contract for the Emergency Childcare Bridge Program for Children in Foster Care.
I believe Joan Moss. This is the item that I was concerned about yesterday. I read it and I didn't quite understand it. I still don't. I want to put in my info. I used, I was an equal employee of a tribe. I was very abused and mishandled. I ended up observing. I wasn't allowed to talk to the kids. I wasn't allowed to attend court with the client. Then um, the children were injured.
Does this have to, does this have to do?
During this time, this court, this, it concerns the bridge program.
Okay.
I want to find out where to go because the children were injured and some were injured permanently. We didn't know where to go. Thank you.
I would say reach out to
I guess we need to find out.
I would say reach out to Director Marketan.
Mr. Chair, actually, um, she's referring to something that happened many, many years ago, long before Director Marketan, and I don't know that it has relevance to this agenda item.
Okay. Thank you very much. And let's bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve waiving the formal bidding process according to purchasing agreement, section thirty eight point two A.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott and a second by Supervisor Crandall. Roll call please, Johanna.
Okay Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia.
Aye.
Thank you.
And Anita, did I need to continue reading that as the unique nature of services? Or am I good?
You can.
Okay. Um, two, consideration to approve, I move to approve the contract between County of Lake and North Coast Opportunities Incorporated for Emergency Childcare Bridge Program for Children in Foster Care in, in an amount that shall not exceed the California Department of Social Services allocation from July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2024, and authorize the board chair to sign.
Second.
We have a motion from Supervisor Scott, a second by Supervisor Simon. Roll call please, Johanna.
Okay Supervisor Simon.
Yes.
Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Supervisor Scott.
Aye.
Supervisor Pyska.
Yes.
And Supervisor Sabatia.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, our last item is our calendars, and so let's go ahead and get started on that. We'll start with District One Supervisor, Supervisor Simon.
Oh, pretty light calendar this week. Uh, gonna enjoy the holidays with the family. I hope everyone, all of our employees, uh, folks in the county are able to do that, so um, I don't have, uh, coming back here on Monday, I have a meeting with Carol, and then we have our Tuesday special redistricting public hearing that we'll be having in our special meeting that's on the 30th, so uh, at that point, that's it.
Perfect, thank you very much. And Supervisor Scott?
Um, tomorrow I will be setting up my tree for hospice, which will be auctioned off on the 4th, donated by Serroptimus, and then I'm coming back here to the office for appointments at one o'clock. And then I'm enjoying Thanksgiving with my family on Friday, Dickens Festival, um, Saturday, you don't want to miss that, downtown Lakeport. Um, on Monday, the 29th, I have um, interviews for the first five executive director at 11:00 and then back here on Tuesday, and that's 10:00 o'clock. Are we really starting at 10:00 on the 30th? Are we starting at, on, at 10:00 on the 30th?
We're starting at nine. We're going to have some regular agenda items and then uh, 10 o'clock.
Microphone please. Or I'll go ahead and state it, we're starting at 9:00 AM with some regular items and at 10:00 AM is when the redistricting um, item will come up.
Right, Mr. Chair, and you had expressed that you had a desire to not have a long board meeting uh, that day since it is a special meeting to wrap up um, before afternoon, and so um, that's our, that will be our intent as we look at the items proposed for the, of regular agenda.
And, and I think that uh, in reviewing the agenda, we'll play by ear on the importance of the items that are brought to us, so it kind of depends on that too. Uh, but it is supposed to be a special meeting specifically for the redistricting, and if we can add to it because it's necessary, then I think we can use that to our advantage. Uh, next Supervisor Pyska?
Um, yeah, I just have a couple of things to report on from last week. Uh, we started with our drought workshops, um, which is uh, something that we're gonna be meeting. It's gonna be a very long process um, to look at um, you know, developing our drought management plans and um, how we function in a world where we um, are going to be experienced for long drought and um, uh, you know, really rainy season, so that, I'm really excited that we have that underway and that's just going to be um, something that we're gonna work on and uh, for, for a long time to come, so that, that's exciting to get that going. Um, I had my Calvary Council meeting on Thursday night. We had a presentation by Cal Fire and some foresters about the um, the massive tree deaths that we're all experiencing. And it is caused by a variety of our pine beetles that we have that are native to our area, but um, you know, when pine trees, all types of varieties now are experiencing this, uh, experiencing this, um, are stressed from drought, they um, you know, they, the, and, and we have warm winters which don't put the pine beetles in hibernation as they usually would. We, you know, we're gonna experience two cycles at least of um, the pine beetles swarming, which contributes to a lot of the death. And so if you're seeing areas where you have the tree deaths happening, it's really important to get those trees down at le, at minimum cut on the ground, um, because they will spread. And our forests as we know them now, if we keep experiencing this drought and mild winters, we will see what has been happening in the Sierras and in Colorado where miles and miles and miles of forests are, are, are destroyed. So that is something that we are facing. And it's gonna take all of us working together um, to stay on top of that. Uh Supervisor Simon and I have been in several meetings about um, a home hardening grant that's um, or opportunity that's coming from OES and um, working with Cal Fire. And we're gonna be bringing more of that information to all of you soon, but we're, it's really, really exciting that Lake County's been chosen for that opportunity. So for this week, tomorrow morning, I'm meeting with a constituent um, in Cobb. And see, Saturday is the um, see, Saturday is the Shop Small Business Day. So I hope everyone is out hitting their small shops in Lake County, support them. Sunday is the Lake County Land Trust Cleanup Day at Boggs Lake, and I'm taking my Girl Scout troop there to spend a few hours cleaning up. Monday, I'm gonna have my meeting with Carol, and then I'm going on my Cal Pine Visitors Tour, which I'm really excited about. And then back here on Tuesday.
Thank you. Vice Chair Crandall?
So tomorrow, I'll be here at the office, working on a couple of things. Of course, I won't have anything till Monday. We'll all have a CEO meeting, and then back here on Tuesday. Oh, last week, pretty much was out because I, you know, had that cough and whatnot. But I would like to note that the Listerne Area Town Hall finally agreed to some bylaws. So hopefully, there'll be a change in January. I just have to announce that. We had a lot of work with that this year, so just wanted to highlight that.
A finale. Okay, and then, let's see, last week, just kind of going over everything that I went through. I know that in Lafco, we finalized the extension of Conacti Water District so that it covers the entirety of the city of Clear Lake versus having a portion taken by Lower Lake Water District. And so I think that was the appropriate change to make, and especially post cash fire rebuilding from the Lower Lakeside versus coming in from the Clear Lakeside just makes more sense. And appreciate that we have not only staff from both Lower Lake and Conacti Water working on projects to secure that area with good water and good access, but also having our Senator McGuire on our side as well, and providing assistance to move us forward. And also met with a group, we have a company called Clean Lakes. They do our harvesting of our aquatic weeds. We contract with them through Water Resources. Met with them to discuss some of the potential projects that we could be looking at for our public lake shores. They are working currently with the city of Clear Lake to do that around their public lakeshore in Austin Beach, to be able to clear it of algae, to make it a more enjoyable scenery, a more enjoyable situation at the beach. We know that we all enjoy our summertime here in the water, and when the algae grows, unfortunately, it does tend to bring us away from the water if we're only able to access the lakeshore. The middle of the lake is usually pretty beautiful. And so, good conversation. We're gonna keep track of what's going on with the city of Clear Lake. We were able to look at some potential costs, and then just kind of preparing for where we might want to pilot that for the county. I think that looking at our public areas where not only our community members might be able to enjoy themselves, but also visitors come to enjoy themselves, should be definitely, we, we should do what we can to clear it of any nuisances such as algae. So looking forward to those conversations continuing. I do want to say that I did go to the street fair over at Woodland Community College. That was a great event. They are just opening again to signing up for classes for their spring. So if you're interested, please go to Woodland Community College and see what classes might be available to your liking. Other than that, this week, I am not gonna be able to make it tomorrow, CAO Hutchinson, for tomorrow's meeting, if it still occurs. Not sure if it's still on or not, but I'm not gonna be able to make it due to my leaving a little earlier for the holidays. I'm going to be enjoying the holiday season as well with my family, preparing for our meeting on the 29th, and then being here for our meeting on Tuesday, the 30th. And we shall see what's possible with our, I do have an appointment to be at Rotary on Tuesday as well. We'll see how long our redistricting meeting will be. So we'll see about that. Other than that, that's it, and that closes up our entire open session of our agenda. So let me go ahead and read out our closed session, which includes our extra item that was approved. Do I need to read that? Just, so we'll be going for the extra item, which is conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code, section 54956.9, subdivision D2E1, one potential case. And then all the other regular items that were on there. 8.1, conference with negotiators regarding the sale of county-owned property located at 1111 Wayland Way, Lakeport, California, APN 21-1781-01, price and terms of payment, A, County Negotiator, C, Hutchinson, S, Parker, S, Carter, and B, Elijah House.
Mr. Chair, before you speed read any further, could we please add Todd Metcalfe to the county negotiators? I neglected to put his name there. He was one appointed to the negotiating team, and I'd like to bring him into the discussion, if you will.
Okay, and keeping in how it's written, T. Metcalfe will be added. And 8.2, employee evaluation, title Director, interim Health Services Director. 8.3, existing litigation pursuant to government code, section 549569D1, in regards to national prescription opiate litigation, case number 17-MD-2804. 8.4, conference with legal counsel, existing litigation pursuant to government code, section 54956.9D1, city of Clear Lake versus County of Lake, Etowah. 8.5, public employee appointment pursuant to government code, section 54957B, interview of Health Services Director, appointment of Health Services Director. And 8.6, public employee evaluation, title Director, registrar voters. And with that, we will adjourn to closed session. Let's go ahead and take a, let's take a 10-minute break and rejoin at 10:45, so nine-minute break.